No, well, and half the, half the employees drive their own vehicles. So how do you know who's an authorized vehicle and who isn't? Anyway, this is my pet peeve, that's all.
That's like visibility, you're turning out of the Hotel Hill connector.
I'm sorry?
Visibility is hard because when you're turning out of the Hotel Hill connector, you basically have to drive all the way out into the road to be able to see around the parked cars.
Yep, yep, yep.
And then you're kind of just.
Now, on the bus, on the bus, you can, before you turn, before you turn off of, turn left off of Barker Mountain Road, you can get an idea of who's coming. But some of those cars just come flying up there that, even though it's clear. And then, and then you're in the middle of it and, and I said.
I'm not boarding.
Yeah, I'm not getting off the, onto the shoulder or whatever. Just stopping. Oh, you got any recorders?
Well, not yet, no.
Not yet.
I was just gonna tell you that. You're recording, but I'm, so don't do anything yet.
Oh yeah, I guess you gotta record in red light time.
Right, but I'm not already recording yet.
You're not officially recording.
Ooh, we got a full family tonight. You ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, this is the May twenty first, twenty twenty five meeting of the Town of Newry Planning Board. This meeting will come to order. My name is Ted Baker and I'm the chairperson for the board. This is a public proceeding and you, the public, have the right to hear everything that's being said unless the board votes to enter into executive session for Maine's Freedom of Access Act. You also have the right to review any of the materials created or received by the board that relate to the board's deliberations unless state law makes that document confidential. Please notify the board if you are unable to hear or would like to access these materials. Tonight's meeting is being audio recorded. If you'd like or need access to this or previous meeting audio recordings, please see the town's administrator. I would also like to welcome Western Hill Access Television and its viewers. For those of you who are present, if you have not already done so, please sign in at this time. Both of you have signed in, thank you very much. Oh, yeah, Brooks, you. Brooks, did you put your name down on the sign sheet? If you would, if you get a chance, please. This is a working session of the planning board. May Freedom of Access Law entitles the public to attend the meeting, take notes of the meeting, and make an audio or video recording of the meeting. The board's policy is not to allow public comment during the meeting. However, as chairperson, I may allow exceptions when it is in, when it is in the interest of the board. An example of an exception would be to allow a butter to address the board. By the Newry's Planning Board bylaws, this meeting may not last more than two and a half hours. The meeting may be extended by thirty minute increments if a motion to extend with a pro vote is made for each thirty minute increment. If the meeting is not extended, any remaining agenda items or discussions will be tabled at that time. Tonight's agenda includes the following business, correspondence received. Sunday River Skiway Corporation Site Plan Application to construct a booster pump house on the Cascades Ski Trail. Application number twenty five dash two eight seven. Prior to attending to the above business, the board must first conduct some administrative procedures. The first of which is attendance. For section two dot B of the Newry Planning Board Orders amended June eighth, twenty twenty one. The board is made up of three voting members and two alternate members. In order for the meeting to proceed, I must first establish that a forum is present. A forum consists of two voting members. The members of the board are myself as chair, Bruce Pierce as vice chair, and John Guatier, also known as Gooch, as the secretary. Our two alternates are Meredith Herrick and Rob Cates. We have three members of the board here, so we have a forum. Let the, let the record show that, please. Next is voting eligibility. A voting member that was absent from the previous meeting is not eligible to vote on old business unless they have completed an affidavit stating that they have reviewed the materials for the missed meeting, read the draft minutes, and have listened to the audio recording of the meeting. All three members of the board were at the last meeting. And so we, we are all eligible to vote. Not sure if the alternates took the time to entertain themselves with the video or not.
Sure did. Not the video, I listened to the recording.
You listened to the recording, okay.
I'll do the notes.
All right. Although since there is no business. Well, I'm happy to hear that you did watch it. You didn't necessarily have to.
All that pain for nothing.
No, it was an interesting meeting.
It was.
It was.
There was some stuff talking about that one possibly.
All right, let's move on to minutes of the prior meeting. You have in front of you a fifteen page document, front and back. The first page is the tonight's agenda. The second page, which is on the back of the agenda, is the minutes of our site visit that was conducted on May seventh on application twenty five dash two eight six. Any comments or edits to be made on those minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I have a motion that we approve the minutes of the.
On-site.
Nope, onsite.
On-site, onsite. Um, visit to Timberline.
You said you had a second there? Okay. We have a motion with a, with a second to approve the minutes of the onsite visit for application twenty five dash two eight six, conducted on Wednesday, May seventh, twenty twenty five. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will take a vote.
One.
Two. Three. The onsite minutes are approved. Next, we have minutes for the public hearing held on Wednesday, May seventh, twenty twenty five, for application twenty five dash two eighty six, which was the village of Timberline. Are there any comments or questions on the minutes of the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing.
I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing.
On-site.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the public hearing on application twenty five dash two eighty six, the village of Timberline subdivision that was held on Wednesday, May seventh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty five. All those in favor?
One, two.
Three. The minutes of the public hearing are approved. Next, we have our minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting on May seventh, twenty twenty five. We are now, uh, we'll go with the four pages into our, five pages into our, four pages into our packet. Any questions on the minutes? Any edits on the minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, May seventh?
Uh, page two, along to the third paragraph, end of the first line.
Which paragraph?
Third. It says, "The board discussed the public hearing held early."
Um, let's see where.
Which paragraph?
Where are you? What page?
Uh, page two of five.
Yeah, so the fourth paragraph of the page, yeah.
Okay.
Held earlier.
Earlier, okay.
Got it.
Yeah, boy. You should have been going back.
I know.
Good job, Gooch.
I'm just saying I did that on purpose.
Yeah.
But I didn't.
So you're not gonna admit it anyway.
Perhaps not the case.
Any other, any other quotations there, Gooch?
That's the only one I spotted.
Okay. Anybody else have any? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as modified by Gooch.
Modified, edited.
Or edited, okay, edited.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as edited.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the edited regularly scheduled minutes of the planning board that was held on May seventh, twenty twenty five. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will take a vote.
One.
Two. Three. Let the record show that the minutes of the regularly scheduled planning board meeting on May seventh, twenty twenty five, as edited, just now by Gooch, has been approved. All right. Uh, does anybody have any correspondence to discuss? I, I have.
No, no correspondence.
Does anybody have any correspondence?
Is there any review?
No, okay. Let's move on now to the highlights of tonight's meeting. Sunday River Skiways Corporation Site Plan Application to construct a booster pump house on the Cascades Ski Trail. Application number twenty five dash two eight seven. Uh, let the record show that this is a site plan review. Gooch, you were gonna do some prep for this, right?
Yep, it's a site plan review.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to you then.
Oh, okay. Um, hi, Peter.
Pete.
Oh. I made a mistake. Um, this is a site plan review. The planning board does have jurisdiction under U D R O, section one, C, two, B. Uh, the applicant.
Do we need a motion or nothing?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Gooch has stated that we have, finding the fact that we have jurisdiction over what part of the, which part of the U D R O?
Section one, dot C, dot two, dot B.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, I make a motion that the planning board does have jurisdiction.
Okay, I will second that. Any discussion? Okay, I will take a vote.
One.
Two. Three. Let the record show that the planning board has determined that it has jurisdiction over the application twenty five dash two eight seven. Okay?
As we have been approved, proof of ownership. Uh, the applicant has a long-term lease agreement on this property. And so I make a motion that the applicant has approved proof of ownership.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Uh, let's amend the motion and just say that it's commonly referred to as the penalty lease.
Totally.
The penalty lease, I believe, right?
Yes.
We have a motion, um, and a second that finds that the applicant has standing in regards to ownership or use of the land in question. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two. Three. Let the record show that the applicant has been determined to have standing.
Uh, the owner is not presenting, but the agent does have a letter of authorization to represent the owner, which is dated the twenty-third of April, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, so that's your finding the fact, your conclusion is that?
Um, the agent, Peter, has authorization to represent the property.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the, given the findings of fact that there is a letter on record giving Peter Roberts agency to represent Sunday River in matters before the planning board, that he has agency.
I'll second that.
It's been made, uh, motion has been made and seconded to find, that finds that Peter Roberts as chief engineer of Sunday River Skiway Corporation has agency to represent matters of the skiway before the planning board. Any discussion?
Do we actually need a motion? My updated, mine doesn't show that.
Oh, what's it say in the upper corner?
Uh, nine, five.
Nine, five, oh, twenty-four, okay.
Yeah.
The new is five, one, twenty-five.
Oh. It's all right.
We have a motion on the floor. And I don't think we have any discussion, further discussion. I'll take a vote.
One.
Two. Three. Let the record show that Peter Roberts has agency to represent Sunday River Skiway Corporation before the planning board.
Does any board member have any bias or conflict of interest?
Uh, the chair is an employee of the Sunday River Skiway Corporation. However, I am not directly or indirectly the owner of ten percent of Sunday River Skiway Corporation, nor its parent corporation, Boeing USA, and therefore do not have a financial conflict of interest per thirty dash A M R S A, section two, six, zero, five. I am also free of any biases based on blood and/or marital relations to the applicant or other parties involved in the application. My, my position, I'm sticking to it.
I act what he said. I also employ you, Sunday River, but have no ownership or bias.
Or, or relations with the board? Okay. As long as we're not talking about the guest services, you're right?
Correct.
Anybody else?
I have no conflict.
Okay, I don't think we need to make a motion on that. We just need to state the fact, the fact that.
Correct.
All right. Next, Gooch. You're flying right along here, you're putting me in a shame. I normally labor through all of this.
Well. Whatever. Is any additional escrow needed? Um, I wasn't able to determine that.
Okay. Um, does any other, other board member feel the need for counsel, consulting outside engineering, legal, accounting firms?
No. I'm not, small project, way away from anything.
All right, so I will, I'll make the following motion. Given that the scope of this application is relatively small and does not involve any substantial required improvements in the way of stormwater management, roads, et cetera, the planning board does not need to consult with its third-party engineer or other professionals. Therefore, the motion is that no additional fee need be required.
I'll second that.
The motion has been made and seconded that no additional fee need to be collected for this application. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three.
Good, gotcha. Let the record show that no additional fee need be required for this application. At this point, Mr. Roberts, it's your show.
Okay, um, my name is Peter Roberts, here on behalf of Sunday River Skiway Corporation. Um, synopsis of the project. We're going to build a twenty-four by thirty-six foot snowmaking booster pump house up in the Grand Junction area where Cascades, T-two, um, Ecstasy and Sunday Punch Trail is gonna all merge. Um, this is part of a kind of ten-year build out of snowmaking to increase our capacity and capitalize on shorter weather windows. The building design itself is still, hasn't quite been hashed out, so the building permit will come after site plan review is approved.
So the, the, the structure size is set, but not the internals?
Yeah, we have, we have a few different estimates for, for various types of building construction. Kind of put our heads together on Friday and pick, pick a winning bidder. Um, all very similar kind of exterior looking fields. Ones like a cold form panel, very big, and the ones pre-engineered, go over it, so.
Different from the, the one you put up at the top of the chandola?
Uh, they're pretty similar.
Same size, similar size?
Quite a bit smaller than that one. I think that one was like forty by sixty or something like that.
The same, the same general appearance?
Yep.
Any questions from the board? You don't have to run any more power up there, you got enough.
Um, we have power about, uh, two hundred yards away that was running for the Barker Six project. Um, and this was anticipated and we put in a pure waste place box on the Sound Paw Trail so we can splice into that and bring, uh, an extension over this board.
In the, um, in Form ten point four, there is a class estimate, and we'll see that running power to the building is, is a chunk of the budget.
Yeah.
Anything else that you want to pass along?
Uh, nothing that comes to mind.
Okay, um, no. This is gonna be a mechanical space unmanned, I take it? No facilities, no?
No, this is just an unmanned building, probably gonna stay at fifty-five degrees and just does a waste heat circulation system for when it starts to heat up when it's in operation. But there's no employee kind of break space or bathrooms or anything like that.
And remotely operated?
Yeah. Yeah, part of the ISNO kind of cloud-based.
Control system that we have. Is there, there's gonna be communication to this building?
Yeah, cellular.
Is what?
Cellular.
Oh, really? Okay.
Nobody does wire anymore. They get, they get, they get, uh, cut by snow groomers.
Among other machines.
Among other machines. All right, anything else there, Peter?
No.
Okay, any questions of, from the board? Well, I forgot to ask, Peter, you don't find that the alternates participate in discussions or whatnot?
No, it's like.
And I didn't, I should have asked, you don't have any problems with my bias or my conflict of interest or anything?
You're widening the trail by twenty feet, that's so you can put the building on the other side?
Yeah, the trail widening is kind of unrelated, it just has always been a problematic corner that holds snow on. Um, and so when we're gonna be drilling and blasting fifty feet away, it seemed like the, the appropriate time to just pop that too and get the, the corner, the width of the corner is less an issue, but the corner is like reverse super elevated. Um, and so you have to build up about ninety feet of snow to keep people moving in the right direction. And so we're gonna bring that down and pull all the rock to the other side of the trail to kind of turn it into a, a bend or.
So you're not gonna use the rock to use as a foundation for the building?
I think the building's gonna need to be blasted as well.
Okay.
Cause you're gonna see much sticking up in a few different places up there.
And the spoils will go where?
Um, I think the, all of the spoils will be used to kind of reshape the trail there.
You don't, you don't envision hauling anything off the mountain?
I don't think so, no. If we have to haul anything out of there, we'll go to a kind of whole depression area, like just a little ways up on the T-two trail. It always has to get filled with the snow, so we're gonna try to shape that up so don't have to blow huge piles of snow into it.
And all of this is either under the permit by rule or the exemption for key areas in the E P?
Yeah, the state law exemption, um, this fits under that because that rule covers buildings up to thirty-five hundred square feet. Um, and we sent a courtesy, you know, to our rapid E P about a month ago, but I never got a response from them, so. So no news is good news. No news is good news.
Ignorance is bliss. All right, anything else?
Um, proposed secondary electrical service for future midstation replacement.
Yeah, I don't know if you've seen the midstation on the locklift is in pretty dire straits. And so there's gonna be a separate building permit application to do well to tear that down and rebuild it. Um, and so the lift operator's house there has a propane heater and no electricity, so we'd like to just run power over there and have electric heat and, um, some lights and probably outlet for people to plug stuff into.
So it's nothing heavy for electrical?
I don't think so, no.
Should be just one-twenty, I imagine, or maybe two-twenty, but. Right? Yeah, that's probably about the original midstation?
I think that's the second midstation, but it was built very hastily and, well, we're all surprised it's still there.
Guess gears up in the early season.
Yeah.
Or get them down in the early season too, that's, that's what's unique about that one.
Okay.
All right, let's move on. Uh, the applicant is requesting a waiver on the submission requirements for notifying abutters. U D R O, section ten, B eight, requires the applicant to notify abutters within a thousand feet of the property line. And the applicant has brought to our attention that the nearest property line is approximately one thousand nine hundred feet away and it borders the Bingham Forest in town Bethel, which is unpopulated except for wildlife. And the nearest, according to the applicant, the nearest residential abutter is the Sunrise Condom Idiems, and that's three thousand, three hundred feet distant. Given that the building is single-story, correct?
Yep.
Max height of twenty feet, maybe?
Yeah, twenty feet.
It's not gonna be any more of a eyesore than.
That's how we get there.
Some people even consider that an eyesore, so. I don't, I don't see any abutters being of concern of this. Any comments from anybody else on that?
No, sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, and also.
Oh, should you do a motion on the way?
Yeah, and it's good.
Oh, okay.
Patience, patience.
Okay, we'll move on.
U D R O, uh, twenty-two A, section twenty-two A allows the, the board to waive portions of the submission requirements. Therefore, given that the closest abutter is approximately one thousand nine hundred feet distant from the proposed construction site and the proposed structure is a single-story mechanical building, the motion is to grant the applicant's waiver request for the requirement to notify abutters as required for U D R O, section ten, B eight. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to grant the abut, the applicant's waiver for having to notify abutters. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
One.
Two. Three. All right. Uh, does any of the board members feel they'd like a little hike up to view the site?
I'm good. I'm good, I've been there.
How about, how about an A P V ride?
Be rage. Promise me no ticks and no black flies on that.
Well, fast enough, and the black fly won't get ya.
Yeah, but the ticks will.
Well, I will entertain a motion that a site visit need not be held.
I make a motion that a site visit is not required for this application.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second has been made that a site visit is not required for this application. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two. Three. Let the record show that the, the board has decided a site visit is not required. A public hearing is optional for site plans, I believe?
Yep.
And is, any board member feel that there might be public who would like to come? And is, any board member feel that there might be public who would like to comment on this project?
I can't think of anybody that would.
And since we're not gonna notify a butters by letter, they won't know anyway.
Good point.
I will take a motion that a public hearing need not be held for this application.
I'll second that.
A motion has been made and seconded that a public hearing need not be held for this application. Any further discussion? I'll take a vote.
One.
Two. Three. Let the record show that the board has deemed a public hearing is not required for this application. And while the applicant did not request one, shame on you, you should've. I will make a motion that a performance guarantee for this site review, which is not required by the U D R O because it is a site plan review, be given. Did I say that correctly? Did I say waive?
No, he did say waive.
Okay.
He said be given.
Okay, okay. I will make a motion then to waive the requirement for a performance guarantee. Since this is a site plan application, it's relatively minor in size, has no significant required infrastructure or required improvements associated with it.
I'll, I'll second that.
Been made, motion's been made and seconded that a performance guarantee for this site plan application need not be required.
One.
Two. Three. Let the record show that performance guarantee does not need to be collected for this site plan application. Alright. Any conditions of approval from the board? I'm sure you got your concrete wash-up procedures all.
Yeah, just copy and paste the same, I think there were three or four from the last one we did from the bathroom facility. So just copy and paste of those.
That's what it'll look like. That's what it'll look like.
Alright, uh, I do not hear anybody coming forth with any conditions of approval. Alright, uh, let the record show that there was, uh, there are no, no conditions of approval to make a motion on.
No, I thought it was no condition of approval placed on this application.
Yep. Okay, let's uh move on to performance standards. Section thirteen of the U D R O. Uh, there are quite a few performance standards. Does any board member or alternate have any issues with any of these performance standards that they apply to this application? Please take your time to review them. As long as you don't have to read every single one of them. Steve, Joe's not gonna have to put padding on this building, are they?
I don't see.
Hopefully, hopefully you're putting it in such a way that it's not gonna be a, a target.
Yeah, I hope so.
Of course, anything's possible. Now, is this gonna, uh, what is this, the crossbow that is, what's the tree trail that's?
Crossbow's the trail that kind of got pinched off by the T-bar.
By the T-bar, so that's already gone away then? So it's just the boundary-to-bound scheme, people that go in there then. Does anybody have any performance ish, any performance standards they'd like to bring forth to the board for the applicant to discuss?
Probably the, the primary time that this building will be used is at night, right?
Yeah, I'd say more often than not.
So what? What, probably the primary time that this building will be used is at night.
Oh, no, you make, they make it till twenty-four hours a day if the windows open.
Yeah, I was just wondering about, about the noise factor.
Yeah, I don't have any like, you know, numerical noise data. Don't think we've had any complaints from the two pump houses and river pump house before. I know the, the compressor house is by far the loudest swimming facility. And once the doors are closed and everything's walled off, there's definitely a hum that comes from them. I have not had recent complaints from that noise.
Just a thought. Yeah, okay, so you get the pump house on top of uh North Peak, where's the other one at?
Um, the Barker pump house, um, on Easy Street.
Oh, down there by the, by the lodge? Again, the old one, the one that always keeps having issues?
The last, the last week we've been changed.
Yeah.
Well, there's a new one.
Well, I think they're waiting, I'll, I'll take it.
The next one.
Well, we think the pipe manifold is the tieback that's holding it, there it is, but.
Okay, um, noise was one there, Gu, you satisfied with that?
Yep.
Bruce?
I don't have any issue with, I think giving it all the foot together.
Okay. Rob?
I actually don't have enough of a good feel for how far away this one is compared to others. So the only question I have is about lighting. Cause I'm assuming you got lights outside because it's a.
Yeah, so um National Electrical Code requires you have an exterior light in each exterior man door. Um, and so we use sort of um just a like sixty watt wall pack light that faces downwards. Um, made by a company called R A B Lighting. Been used quite a few different places around the resort. So it's probably what we specify. And then there's a overhead door um that would allow us to get a forklift in to pull or pump. And so that will probably have a more substantial floodlight. Um, and so we were talking about electrical needs yesterday and decided that that the wall packs next to the man doors will be unfetteredized, so they'll just come over off automatically when it gets dark. The floodlight is gonna be kind of on a separate switch on a has-needed basis.
Something natural.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can be a timer?
They're all down facing.
Yeah, and they all, they all are down facing.
We're not gonna put any flagpoles with?
Lasers.
With lasers sticking up like we already have elsewhere on the property, but no.
I won't be able to see it from my house, right?
I hope not.
Alright.
We got a big, something on the way.
Yeah. That's all a big hill.
Okay, I don't hear any big issues with performance standards. Okay. Uh, when we get down to the final criteria of approval, we'll cover that with the, in the courts and local ordinances. Alright, let's move on now to section five, criteria of approval. And see how quickly we can get through this one here. The first one is, uh, we're on page twenty-one of the U D R O criteria of approval. Pollution. Undo water or air pollution. Elevation's not an issue. Nature of soil and subsoils is not an issue since there is no wastewater disposal plan.
Waste water anyway.
Anyway, period. And so that takes care of all that. So I will uh make the motion that given that the application is for a mechanical building that is not manned and does not have any sanitary systems for human waste disposal.
Are you only talking about A?
Yes.
Okay.
Taking just about A. That pollution is in compliance.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded that the uh criteria of approval for pollution, that the applicant is in compliance. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please.
One.
Two. Three. Okay. Moving on, erosion. So for the blasting, Peter, what are you, you gonna be putting worms in or anything like that, is that gonna be an issue? Worms? Worms or whatever for erosion?
Oh, um, the erosion mulch worms typically are preferred way of managing the perimeter control.
And that's what you'd be employing up here?
Yeah.
And you do have a, I think you did say you have a uh erosion control plan part of the, of your plan?
Yeah, it's in the drawing, so yeah.
Alright, given uh, given that the applicant has provided an erosion control, control plan. And uh I make a motion that the development will not cause unreasonable soil erosion.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded that the uh criteria of approval for B erosion is in compliance. Are those in favor?
One.
Two. Three. Okay. Erosion is in compliance. Anybody wanna make a motion for traffic, please?
Make a motion that the proposed development will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion.
Okay, I was gonna say it was not applicable, but okay. I will second that motion. A motion has been made that the, the project will not cause any unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions. Would expect the use of the highways or public roads existing or proposed. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two. Three.
I make a motion that D sewage disposal is not applicable. Second.
Motion has been made with a second that the criteria of approval D sewage disposal is not applicable. And that is primarily because there is no wastewater systems planned for this building. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please.
One.
Two. Three. Moving on to E municipal solid waste disposal. You're not putting any dumpster up there, are you, Al?
Uh, no, the, the construction debris is gonna probably come down in a basket and get thrown in our construction, I'm concerned, lot mine. But once the building's operating, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be generating any trash.
I will make the motion, given that the proposed structure is an unmanned mechanical space that should not generate any solid waste. That it will not be an unreasonable burden on the town's ability to dispose of such solid waste.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded that the condition of approval E municipal solid waste is in compliance. Any discussion?
One.
Two.
Three.
Three, alright. Alright, uh, Gu, how about the F?
Aesthetic, cultural and natural values. One part of these says it's not applicable, but proposed development will not have an undue adverse effect on scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics or historic sites. Significant wildlife habitat. Rare or replaceable areas or public rights for physical and visual access to the shoreline.
I think we can rule out the shoreline.
Yeah, certainly, oh, yeah, and I'm pretty sure there's no historic sites up there.
Nope.
And it's relatively tiny, so significant wildlife habitat is probably.
No more than, it's already been displaced up there with the ski area, right?
Yeah. Can I say that it's just not applicable?
I would, I would go with that. I would second that. Motion is made and seconded that criteria of approval F aesthetic, cultural and natural values is not applicable. And I'll, any discussion? Hearing none, vote?
One.
Two.
Three.
Three. Financial and technical capacity. How's your uh P E coming?
Um, I'm currently studying for U G M. I'm planning on taking it this fall.
Oh, good, best of luck.
Thank you.
Then they'd have to give you a new title, wouldn't they?
Or you can. Question is, you gonna give him a raise?
Okay, um, given that uh the overview of this application is being conducted by a licensed professional engineer and a professional engineer in training. I think that satisfies the technical capacity. And given the modest size of financial need for the building and that the Sunday River Skiway Corporation and its parent Moyn USA has sufficient financial ability to pay for this. I will make a motion that the condition, criteria of approval G financial technical capacity has been met.
Make a motion.
I made a motion.
Yeah, I'll second it, I will second it.
A motion and a second for, has been made for that criteria of approval G financial technical capacity has been met. Is there any discussions? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. I make a motion that H and I are not applicable. Actually, J also.
Okay, so the finding the fact for sufficient water is that?
It's not using it.
Not required for the, for the project, okay? And that would also apply to I, public water supply.
And it's not within the watershed of any pond or lake.
Okay. Given that, and you said you made that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Bruce, would you like to second that?
I will second that motion.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded that criteria of approval H sufficient water, I public water supply and J surface waters do not apply. Any discussion? I will take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three.
Uh, okay, the proposed development will not alone or conjunction with the disent activity adversely affect the quality of qua, or quantity of groundwater. It's gonna be on ledge, right?
Yeah, it's mostly ledge up there.
I will make a motion that uh, given that the elevation of the proposed structure halfway up Barker Mountain. And the fact that it's being built on ledge, that it has no impact on groundwater and therefore criteria of approval K groundwater is in compliance.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second has been made that criteria of approval K groundwater is, is in compliance. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three.
Bruce, would you like to take L, please?
I will um make a motion that L, M and N are non-applicable for this project.
Okay, and the, and the reasoning for L is?
Because there's not a flood area, um, it's. Because there's not a flood area, um, it's, on, its elevation is way above anything on a flood. Um, it doesn't involve any freshwater wetlands, and it is not on a river stream or brook.
All right, that's motion, I'll second that. A motion has been made and seconded that, uh, criteria for approval L, flood areas, freshwater M, freshwater wetlands, and N, river stream or brooks, are not applicable. Any discussion?
I'll second that.
Uh, no, I would second, that, I'm, I'm seconding it.
Oh, that's
You're off on this one.
Okay, never mind.
Now I need you to, to vote for it now.
One.
Two.
Three. Just wake me up when you need something.
Kinda like that we, uh, represented in Congress at the tax, at the, uh, hearing that, that they took a video of and okay. Uh, stormwater, uh, I think you said there was gonna be minimal impact on stormwater management because of the size of the building.
Sure.
Uh, given that the, uh, size of the project is relatively small and does not, uh, involve any major earth moving, well, you phrase that since there are blasting, but that, uh, and you have a stormwater management plan on the, included in the plan, correct?
Yeah.
That, and there's a stormwater management plan as part of the application that criteria for approval O, stormwater, is in compliance. Any second?
Yes, I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Gooch. Uh, a motion and a What's that? A, uh, motion and a second that criteria for approval O, stormwater, is in compliance. Any discussion? Are those in favor?
One.
Two.
Oh, three.
Three, okay. All right, let's see.
So I make a motion that P is not applicable.
Okay, and that is because, uh, it's has, it's not
It's not even subdivision.
Uh, subdivision, that's true, and it's not, uh, doesn't have any shore frontage on the river stream or brook.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, and mo- and I'll, why don't you second that there?
I'll, I'll second it.
Motion that Gooch made, that is not applicable.
That's not applicable. Second a motion that Gooch made not applicable for spaghetti lots.
A motion and a second has been made that criteria for approval P, spaghetti lots prohibited, is not applicable due to, uh, the proposed site not having any shore frontage on the river stream or brook, and that it is a site plan and not a subdivision. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three.
Okay. Municipal services, the proposed development will not place unreasonable burden, town municipal services, including but not limited to the fire department, if the building burns, it goes, right?
I don't think we'll get the fire department up there.
No, no, certainly not with any water. And hopefully, hopefully you have a working pump that you can pump water up there yourself.
Yeah, but there's not many places Alan can't get to on the Honda bike.
All right.
So there's not gonna be any fire suppression in the building?
No.
There's one headache you don't have to worry about.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that, uh, criteria for approval Q, municipal services, in lieu of the fact that, uh, it is a unmanned mechanical space that would not generate any solid waste, liquid waste, nor place a burden on the Newry Fire Department, that municipal services is, is in compliance with municipal services. So All right. Motion has been made and seconded that criteria for approval Q, municipal services, is in compliance. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three.
I make a motion that R, Lake Pho- phosphorus concentration is not applicable because this development is not within the watershed of Howard Pond.
Okay, well, you keep on going to, to the next one.
And S, I make, also make that as a motion that it's not applicable because it's not in, unplanning another adjoining municipality.
Hey, keep going, Gooch, you got one more?
And T is not applicable because this property has not been subject to liquidation harvesting.
Um, I'm seconding the
Second.
Oh, I thought maybe you had a comment.
I thought you did too.
Yeah.
No, it's just for him.
Hey, you got us all excited.
Just bought a hundred thousand dollar pickup truck.
Okay, a motion with a second has been made that, uh, where were we, R, S and T, was it? That, uh, criteria for approval R, Lake Phosphorus concentration, because, uh, the development site is not in the Howard Pond area. Criteria for approval S, impact on adjoining municipalities, because the, uh, closest municipality is Bethel, which is nineteen hundred yards, nineteen hundred feet away. And T, land subject to liquidation harvesting, because, uh, it just doesn't apply. Those three criteria approvals are not applicable.
One.
Nope, nope, you need a second first.
Second.
All right. A motion has been made with a second that criteria for approval R, Lake Phosphorus concentration, S, impact on adjoining municipality, and T, land subject to liquidation harvesting, do not apply. Any discussion? Okay, now Gooch, you can say
One.
And I'll say two.
And I'll say three.
Okay. Last but not least, conformity with local ordinances and plans. Uh, we had a previous discussion where we had a couple of questions about performance standards, but none that were, uh, not satisfied. Uh, is it safe to say that the board finds this application to be in conformity with local ordinances and plans?
I, I would agree.
Yep. I will make a motion then that, uh, criteria for approval U, conformity with local ordinances and plans, that this application is in compliance. And motion has been made and seconded that, uh, criteria for approval U, conformity with local ordinances and plans, that this application is in compliance. Yeah, any discussion?
One.
Okay. Two?
Three.
All right. Would you like one? Oh, you know what? We got ahead of ourselves, we never found the application complete, didn't we?
I was wondering when you're gonna get to that.
Yeah, I guess I just skipped ahead of myself.
I missed the last one.
Can we do one retroactive?
Sure.
Uh, okay, uh, I will make a retroactive Okay, I will make a retroactive motion that the application is complete.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded that, uh, the application's been found complete.
We don't wanna do section by section.
No.
One.
Two.
Sorry.
Who's seconded first?
Gooch. All right. Do you have anything else I need to skip over? Gooch, how, how am I doing, Gooch, do we got anything that you?
Uh, inform the applicant that all revised or additional documents and/or plans must be submitted to the planning board ten days in advance.
Right, but we found the application complete, so that's not applicable. But he's been so advised.
Okay.
I think he's well aware of our rather strict
Yeah, we've, we've come a long ways.
Of course, a final mistake in the app, in the, uh, in the, uh, in the tracking.
What's that?
Is, what, the application is signed.
Uh, do we have a signed copy of the application? I think there, yeah, I think there were signatures on there if I remember.
I believe, uh,
Yeah, there are hundreds of signatures.
The eleven by seventeen drawings in the application are not signed with the full-size copy.
Okay.
No, but I mean, like, uh, all the different sections of the other
Yes, they're all signed, they're all signed.
They're all signed.
Okay, any other species, since we're moving rapidly on this? Yeah, maybe it was done, uh, the, the child Joel, I think you got the number of it. That's right, that's right, and I, and I ran off with it, forgot to give to Joel until a couple of days later. And actually didn't see her until she got back. All right, does the board have any other issues with, or discussion points with this application?
I'll make the number tabs.
I like that.
Yeah.
Good job, Gooch, that was
Me, but thank you. Smarter minds than myself. More organized minds. Oh, yeah.
All right, I will make a motion that the Newry Planning Board give its approval to application twenty-five dash two-eight-seven, Sunday River Skiway Corporation. For lack of a better description, Cascade Pump House.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Okay, seconded twice, good. An applica- uh, a motion, a motion with two seconds to give approval to application twenty-five dash two-eight-seven has been made. Any discussions? If you're now or forever hold your peace. Okay. I will take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three.
Okay, congratulations, Peter.
Thank you, guys.
Please make, make all your applications this easy.
I hope so.
You have been, uh Yo, you were in anticipation of having this approved?
Wow, very hopeful.
Yeah. Okay, Gooch, you're up.
Shall I pause the tape?
Uh, you may pause the tape. Where am I going over? Is it there anywhere?
Yeah.
You saved the dot from me.
So after you pass your engineer exam, you get to wear your state boots.
Twenty, twentieth?
Play first.
I'm about to sign off, no, just
Let's see, I'll wear these 'cause they're just the only holdout pair of shoes I have.
Must you have signed on the top line?
No, man, it says approved by
Oh.
How long have you had those?
Two years.
I'm don't need to be on the top.
They're like especially treated, others meant to deal with, like, hydrogen sulfide and other chemicals in Cabo New York, which I just was like, okay, but that's like really don't look very well, I'm pretty happy with it.
So Peter, what the business do we have to look forward to from Sunday River?
Start it again. Um, I'm always excited to do more real estate, um, but looking for more sales and existing offerings. Um, and then hopefully the big snowmaking pump house is gonna come soon before that thing crumbles.
This year or next year?
That wouldn't be this year.
No.
Um, that's gonna take quite a while of planning and but this, this is one of the last, part of the problem with replacing the big pump house is we need the facilities to receive the water from it.
Yep.
And so we've been kind of working from the outside in.
Makes sense.
And now this will be one of the last pieces.
So that's not, you relocated other than where it is at Barker?
I wanted it relocated and our corporate snowmaking guy thinks that where it's at right now is the right place for it, so. Do, do two copies stay with the town or one?
Uh, two, I believe, well, yeah, I think
Um, well, it's not going to be the same.
Oh, that's right, that is, yeah. Can we do, if you, if you need one, you can come back and get it.
Okay.
We're kinda lost without our coenforcement officer.
So I'll work on these finding the back of them.
Mm-hmm. With Gooch. Um, is, you gonna be doing the top code on Barker Mountain Road, or you just kinda got lost in the?
Uh, yeah, I've, I've been a little frustrated about that, 'cause that was always supposed to be just a base
Yeah, they, in fact, you stated that we were gonna hold off of it until after the Barker Six was in, because of the heavy equipment and whatnot. At least that was the excuse.
And a few other roads that need some work too, and seems like the Excuse me. Don't have enough money to fix things, just buy new things.
Yeah. I hear you. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, usual, thank you.
Your information?
Thank you very much.
Till next time?
We'll see you.
See you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okey dokey. Our next on our list is findings of fact. We have two in front of us tonight. The first one is, uh, Four J LLC, minor subdivision on Monkey Brook Road, application number twenty-five dash two-eight-five. Uh, that is also in your package. And I would like to commend our recording secretary for another exceptional correlation of findings of fact and conclusions of law. Does anybody have any comments or edits?
I didn't realize this, uh, project was going on so long until I started reading this.
Yeah, there was, uh, there was some delays in there, primarily from the applicant. That they, quite a few times, were, some things and
Six months.
Well, from the conceptual pre-application, might have been six months.
Yeah.
It took a long, took a long time from their, from the pre-application to their regular application. I think they had to, I think they had to work out some, some deals and driveways, could be my guess, but Barrett, anything?
No.
Rob?
Nope.
Gooch?
Nope.
Bruce?
No.
Okay, Becky? You put them together. I'll take a motion that we approve the findings of fact and conclusions of laws for application number twenty-five dash two-eight-five, a minor subdivision submitted by Four J Development LLC concerning a, uh, project on Monkey Brook Road.
Second that motion.
Okay, a motion has been made with a second that the board approved the findings of fact and conclusions of law on application twenty-five dash two-eight-five. Were there any comments or discussions?
Um, oh. Um, on page thirteen or fourteen, top is T.
Top is T. And the finding of fact is the acreage is not suitable for timber harvesting, regulation four. Well, I sort of agree with it, but I'm not sort of comfortable with it.
Where are you reading?
The findings of fact.
The acreage is not suitable for timber harvesting, second now, same pair of eyes.
I remember that specifically as how it was presented. So, at this point, I think we have to stick with it.
Yeah, it's, it's so steep that it's pretty hard to harvest it. Yeah, I remember you talked about it.
Okay.
And because of, of its inclining.
Oh, no, it's, it's pretty intense.
But, and I think it was, I think it's been in ownership for over five years anyway, so.
Yes, it has.
Um, okay, so a motion with a second has been made for findings of fact and conclusions of law for application twenty-five dash two-eight-five. We've had our discussion, any more discussions? Here are none, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that the board has approved the findings of fact and conclusions of law for application number twenty-five dash two-eight-five. Uh, a minor subdivision, the applicant being Four J Development LLC. Do you read both?
Those, yeah, the two copies, one from town's files and one from the set off to.
And to chairman right there, you put in all the others, or you want me to take it to you?
And then, um, somebody needs a witness.
Bruce, you do a witness there, please. Next, we have the findings of fact and conclusions of law for application number twenty-five dash two-eight-six, Timberline TH LLC for major subdivision at eight Timberline Road. Does any board member have any edits, comments, questions on the findings of fact and conclusions of law?
I did notice when I was doing the final, findings of fact, that, that's why I checked tonight. Um, you'll see. Um, you're confusing when you're doing two at the same time. Oh, because, yeah. So. Right, so the finding of fact that you just signed.
Yeah, I just signed, okay.
Yeah.
From Four J?
Yeah. You'll see that, um, in the packet that was, yeah, so some of them were signed before, but the ones that changed didn't get signed. So, you want to watch for that.
Okay. Point taken, noted. Okay, uh, anybody have any comments, discussions on those findings of fact? We will take a motion then, please.
This is for Timberline, right?
This is for Timberline, correct.
I'll make a motion that we accept the findings of fact and conclusions of law for application number twenty-five dash two-eight-six, Timberline TH LLC. I'll second that.
Motion has been made with a second that the board approved the findings of fact and conclusions of law for application number twenty-five dash two-eight-six, a major subdivision submitted by Timberline TH LLC and they call the Village at Timberline. Any discussion? Here are none, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that the board has approved the findings of fact and conclusions of law for application number twenty-five dash two-eight-six, a major subdivision applied for by Timberline TH LLC called the Village at Timberline. It's still five o'clock.
I know.
Uh, no, there will be no CEO reports. We will have at least one open discussion.
Just pictures of the big ditch from the CEO.
I'm sorry?
Just pictures of the big ditch from the CEO.
Oh, I haven't, uh, you got pictures from the CEO?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm jealous.
From there out on the, that thing that I would never go out on, that walkway thing that you look down near four thousand feet.
Oh, the glass, the glass walkway?
Yeah, it's all right. I've seen it from the bottom looking up, which is just fine, you know.
Well, when we got us there three weeks down, road was closed, you had to go a hundred eighty miles to get there.
So, um, just to recap, uh, this last, the findings of fact conclusion of law, uh, with this approval and the signing tonight, thirty day clock starts for the applicant should they choose to appeal. So it, it didn't start, no, no, it starts now. It starts now.
Right, so, um, do I send it, because normally I just send these regular man.
Uh, why don't you just send it, why don't you send it certified?
Okay.
That's not too much of an hassle for you now. And-
Was I just formalizing and rip my bill, sorry?
Well, the, given, given that the application was denied, and so there's a possibility that the agreed party, the applicant, will appeal.
Yeah.
Um, they need the findings of fact and conclusions of law before they can really put together their appeal. So it didn't make any sense to start the clock two weeks ago.
Yeah.
So, so it gives, it actually works in their favor, it gives them more time to do that, so. All right.
The other ones I can just send regular.
Yeah, the other ones you can just send like you normally. All right, um, open discussion. Gooch?
Any, anything about the Newery mines?
I haven't heard too much from.
You got following up on the tales from the Gorham mines for the quarry?
For what one?
The Gor, the Gorham quarry?
Uh, that was in the newspaper, yeah, or on TV, I guess it was. What is the Gorham? No, kind of Gorham is their-
Sand and gravel, they want to go on the quarry.
Yeah, it was on the news.
In Alfred.
Okay.
It said Alfred, I think I saw.
Oh, yeah, it was, I think it was Alfred.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Gorham, sand and gravel in Alfred. Uh, I, I haven't heard nothing on anything from the, the eastern part of Newery. Um, have you?
No, just, uh, one of the, one of the handovers selectmen hit me up about it. Um, he was concerned about runoff into the Howard Pond.
Well, I guess we, that would be a CEO follow-up.
That's been a couple of years too, since that's been, comes down the road out of it too, right?
I wouldn't be surprised if they're still attempting to find thermoline up there. It's like they have the last seventy years since it was no longer a, a Felspar mine.
I was wondering, like, if you brought the whole lithium thing though, right? Like, that's what they're really after.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard a thing, uh, other than there was a lithium strike in California, Oregon, uh, that was like twenty billion dollars worth.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, in the Newery?
Yeah, 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 it kind of failed, made it, it made us failed if I remember, but that was, what, last year?
Twenty years ago, yeah. Since then, I haven't heard anything about the Newery.
I will, um, when the CEO comes back, I will bug your ear to follow up, see if there's anything more on up there. Any other open discussions? Gooch, your term is, on the board, is expiring next month?
It is.
It is?
Oh, it is.
Um, are you, may I dare ask your intentions?
I didn't even know.
Um, anyway, take it over and let, let the town administrator know what the, if, if she has to put the hounds out for new blood or if you're gonna stay on.
Okay.
All of us, I'm sure, will, I'm, I can't speak for anybody else, but I'm happy to have you stay on.
Okay.
You, you've had a long, long service here and you have a lot of wealth of knowledge and history that is invaluable to the, to the board, so.
Somebody once said I was an absolute encyclopedia of absolutely useless knowledge.
But it's useless to somebody is a gold mine to somebody else.
Yeah, well, yes, it is, and then there's more.
Rob, you have any discussion items you'd like to bring up?
No, I mean, the, the thing I was struggling with was the whole completeness for that one. That was, what's going on?
The struggle with the?
The, um, the, the fact that we hadn't marked it complete, at least I hadn't. When I listened to the recording, I thought I missed it or something.
You were moving.
I was moving, I was on a mission.
Notice that.
Yeah, I figured you'd get to a mention.
Normally I would, but I, when I looked at the notes from last time when I listened to it, I didn't hear it, but I figured I must have missed it.
You, you're talking about tonight or for you?
Yeah, well, I, I thought that the, the pump house had been basically completely tossed tonight.
It had been.
Yeah.
But I thought I missed it and somehow it had hit completeness last time.
Yeah, no, 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 it got postponed from last night. Okay, but yeah, when, when, you know, we're all, we're all prone to errors, so please speak up when, when you, when one is made. Meredith, anything to bring up? Gooch?
Do we have anything for next, next, next month's meeting?
Uh, just the findings of fact and conclusions of law, um, we have to have a meeting in June, I guess the question.
So, um, is, is it the first meeting in June that you guys vote on officers?
No, uh-
When's officers?
That will be the July.
Election July.
On July, we will have the first meeting in July, we should be, the election of officers.
Okay.
I have not, since Joel's not here, I'm not aware of anything coming in, but there might be something on your desk.
Okay.
Um, we have a choice, we can meet on the first, on the June fourth and take a risk that something gets submitted on, by then, so we then have to meet again on June eighteenth. Or we can, pending, nothing having been submitted, I can cancel the meeting on the fourth, next, early next week, once I can verify with Joel. And we would have to meet on the eighteenth.
Are there any questions, since there won't be assigned finding of fact for this?
There will be, but it's, seeing that was approved.
It was approved.
It was approved and it's more of a formality, there's no clock. I don't think we have any agreed parties that are gonna, it might be a chipmunk or two, but, um-
Great squirrel.
Great squirrel. Um, I don't see that we need to meet just to do the finding of fact and that we can push that off for, uh, to the second, second meeting in June. So, is that the way the board wants to go, or, or you want to take a chance and meet on the fourth and not have to meet on the nineteenth? And Bruce says, I don't care, I'm not gonna be here on the fourth anyways.
Well, in that case, I think we ought to meet on the eighteenth.
Okay. All right.
Eighteenth is the day before the holiday, so.
What holiday?
Seventeenth.
Oh.
Oh, there you go, you see, I'm maybe gonna have to meet on the fourth time.
What's the day before?
Who cares, it's the day before the holiday.
Okay, uh, tentatively, we will cancel the June fourth meeting as soon as I can confirm upon the CEO's return from vacation that there is no, items have been submitted in the proper timeframe for consideration. And I will send out an email to that effect early next week. So please, uh, tentatively keep the fourth open just in case we need it, otherwise make sure you keep the eighteenth open for our meeting at that time.
I'll be checking shortly here.
What happened at town meeting, uh, we had fifty-six residents turn out, which was quite, quite outstanding. Um, uh, every, all the work articles of reception of one was passed, the one that failed was the Vacation Rental Ordinance.
Darn.
Went down in flames, so. Uh, and I think, well, that's not my point, it's not my place to say one thing or the other. It, it failed, uh, I think it was forty-four to fourteen.
Ooh.
I thought it was forty to fifteen.
Forty to fifteen, yeah, it was, it was.
According to Facebook.
Yeah, seven to twelve. So there, that does bring up a point, there was an amendment to the U D R O, uh, the definition of a town road has changed, that is it.
What's the new definition?
The new definition. Meredith, on the shelf back there, there's a gray piece of paper, you care to read that out for us, please?
Amendment to the Unified Development Review Ordinance, the definition of town road in section twenty-four B of the Unified Development Review Ordinance is amended to read as follows, new language is underlined, deleted language is struck through, town road, a struck is road maintained by the town of Newery.
That's what it used to be.
Yep, and now it reads, a townway as defined by title twenty-three M R S three zero two one three or public easement as defined by title twenty-three M R S three zero two one two and three zero two two. Effective date, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. These are actually for us to put in our.
Yeah.
Oh. Pass them out?
Yes.
Thank you.
Something that wasn't better definition than town road.
Yeah, it is, it, it was brought about by, I don't know what the, what the meaning of the second part of that is, um, uh. It was brought about by, I believe, the driveway entrance ordinance. It was brought about by, I believe, the driveway entrance ordinance, and it came to the, our town attorney's attention that our previous definition was inadequate and needed to be beefed up. Okay.
And did there, was someone, um, was it Gary?
Gary, our, our, the chair, the chair of the select board is, uh, stepping down at the end of his term, at the end of June, and we have elections on June tenth, I believe.
Oh, so that wasn't part of the town?
No, 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 it's a secret ballot, there will be a secret ballot election on election day, June tenth.
Okay.
The same day that we have to vote on the school budget, which is posted at the post office, if you care to go in and go read the warrant for the school budget. I will ask our, our resident member to talk about it.
Is it not posted here too?
It's probably posted out, out, outside there too, and I think it's probably, if it's not on the webpage, it should be next week.
There's also additional details on S A D forty-four's website.
Okay, because I, one of my ongoing beefs with the town office is they don't put the ballot on the websites.
We'll, we'll let you, we'll let you deal with that with the, with the town administration.
I have tried several times.
Okay, any other open discussion items? If not, I will, uh, taking adjournment for until our next meeting, which will either be June fourth or the June eighteenth, depending on if there's any business pending for the next, the next two weeks.
Make the motion that we adjourn the planning board meeting of May twenty-first.
Okay, I'll second that.
A motion and a second has been made that we adjourn this meeting on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor? One, two, three, meeting adjourned. It's still five o'clock.